Welcome to the Norwood School Committee Meeting of Wednesday, June 4th, 2025. I am chairing in my capacity as vice chair. With me in person tonight is David Hiltz and Judith Bromley. Dr. Joan Giblin is joining us remotely. And our chair, Anne Marie Missola, will be joining remotely as soon as she can. She is away for work and stuck in travel, but will be joining us soon. We did start our meeting at 6:30 in executive session, but we are now moving into the business meeting portion. First order of business, if I could please ask everybody who's in attendance to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so we do have two sets of minutes to approve this evening. May 14th executive session and May 14th business meeting. Is there any discussion or a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, thank you, David. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Judith. Since we are in a hybrid format, I do have to poll individually. So Joan?
Yes.
Thank you. Judith?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. So Donna, the minutes pass four to zero. Superintendent Luff, do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do not.
Okay. So we'll move right along to our warrant report. Anne Marie signs our warrants, but I can read it into the record. So this week, Anne Marie signed warrants for school nutrition for $206.02, for school nutrition $6,907.26, for accounts payable $14,081.85, accounts payable $7,791.65, accounts payable $65,238.89, accounts payable $82,511.70, and accounts payable $10,665.10 for a grand total of $22,386.47. Any questions from the committee for Superintendent Luff or Mr. Mannion on the warrant report? Okay, seeing none, we'll move right along. So at this time, we do have public comment. As a reminder to the community, there are different ways to access public comment. You can call in advance to pre-register, calling the superintendent's office by noon the day of the meeting, and then you can either come and speak or get a link to join remotely. Or if you'd like to speak in person, you can also just show up. Is anybody here this evening for public comment? Ms. Smith, please just join us.
The knee just went.
Oh, no.
It's okay. Hi, I'm Jody Smith, president of the Norwood Teachers Association. I just wanted to make you aware that last night, we had the 42nd Annual Norfolk County Teachers Association Award Ceremony, and we had some very exciting news for our people that were nominated here in Norwood. First off, our honor award went to Jill Driscoll. So that was very nice. It was awarded posthumously, and everyone gave a very nice response to it. Our service award nominee was Fred Ferreira. He is a paraprofessional in our task program at the Callahan School. And then we had our Rookie of the Year, who is Bella Inzota. She is the PACS teacher at the Willett, and she won. So she is the Rookie of the Year for Norfolk County Teachers Association, and this is only the third time that that has been awarded, and Norwood has had two. First year was Dan Quinn from the Cleveland. So it's quite an accomplishment for our young teachers here in Norwood. So I just thought I'd let you know that that was happening last night. Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know. Congratulations to all of those staff members.
Wonderful news.
Anybody else here for public comment? Superintendent Luff, did anybody register online?
They did not. Bachelor.
Okay, so at 7:08, I will declare a public comment closed. Moving along to our appearances, first presentation is the Elementary School Handbook. So Mr. Eyle and Mrs. Ferrer, if you'd like to join us.
Good evening.
Good evening. Madam Chair, members of the committee, we are here for our annual presentation on the proposed elementary handbook. You should have received a memorandum which outlines changes as well as the handbook itself. So running through the handbook, you'll see that most of the changes, proposed changes for the year are simply clerical. Table of contents updated to reflect new page numbers, that's always one of the most challenging things. We adjusted report card marking terms, added the revised acceptable use policy, which I believe came before you a couple of weeks ago by Technology Director Mr. Kidd. And then we may update over the summer any additional grammatical or formatting items that are not substantive. There are a couple of new things in there. Do you want to talk about the revised discipline?
We just made the language match what, more closely to what had been given down. I think a couple of years ago, we had some language. We had done some of the work last year, and we made it even more aligned to what had been handed down before with the discipline. I think that's basically it, right?
Yep. And then two other things, the, we eliminated language just earlier today around extended day program. We found that there were some things in there that were very specific to that program that's now under the REC department. So any program act changes to extend a day will come from Norwood REC, not from Norwood Public Schools. And the second thing is, I think you talked about it last month with Dr. Galligan, the idea of a medical reentry meeting. So again, that's nothing that's new to you. So nothing of substance of changes, but you will see just kind of updates throughout.
And just for the record, the disciplinary language that was handed down was what was agreed to and approved through our tier focus monitoring and what you approved in January.
We're happy to take questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the elementary handbook for 2526?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Judith. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, David. So again, if the poll individually, Joan?
Yes.
Thank you, Judith.
Yeah. Thank you. David?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, so four to zero, the elementary handbook is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you for your ongoing support.
Have a great night, guys.
You too. And we'll move right into our Coakley Middle School Handbook. Dr. Frazek, if you'd like to join us.
Computer's about to shut down.
Oh, no.
Like 30 seconds.
I have your summary up there.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that. So very similar to the elementary, just some kind of logistical and little bits of changes. I think the biggest thing was making everything five to eight as opposed to six to eight. And one thing I just wanted to note up here is, I think we'll take a closer look at it next year when I have fifth grade teachers that I can pull into my school council and fifth grade parents to make sure it's all like appropriate for fifth graders as well as sixth through eighth graders. Couple of things that we did, anywhere it said six to eight, we changed to five to eight. I think you found one that I missed, so I will go back and correct that. On page 10, we added the medical reentry paragraph. On page 19, we added a little language about smart, I shouldn't say smartphone, I should say smart watch.
Smart watch.
So smart watch being seen as a cellphone if you're using it in the same way you would a cellphone. So in other words, if you're texting on your phone in class, we are going to take your phone, your watch, same way we would a phone. Added the new responsible use policy, starting on page 20. And then we noted that we had a whole thing about bringing in your own lock for a locker that will now be embedded on the lockers for grade six through eight. So we just changed that to talk about embedded locks on the new school and that homeroom teachers have all the combinations for that. And that's pretty much it.
I know totally non-handbook question, and I should know this being on the Middle School Building Committee, but fifth grade doesn't have lockers?
They do have lockers. Right now, they don't have any locks on them. And working with the fifth grade teachers, that's kind of how they wanted to start because they currently have cubbies that don't have locks on them. We have plenty of padlocks if we want to add them to them, but I think we're going to start with kind of treating them like cubbies that look like lockers. But yes, they do have. Computer to shut down.
It's like, I don't think we left that off in the middle school.
No, 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 no. There are lockers for, on all four floors, for all grades.
Are there any questions on the handbook at the Coakley? Okay, so is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, David. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Judith. So Joan?
Yes.
Judith?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, so that passes four to zero.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. So our next appearance is Dr. Nadine Exstrom from Academic Discoveries. Mr. Luff, is there anything you would like to say for Dr. Exstrom's work?
You do, but I want to make sure that I get your folks. Can members of Dr. Exstrom's team unmute? I just want to make sure you can do that. Or do I need to help you with that?
Okay.
Oh, okay, great. So as you know, the town of Norwood and through town meeting provided a significant amount of funding to do an audit of our student service system as a whole to make appropriate recommendations for where we might want to move forward with special education and student services in the future. Academic Discoveries was a selected vendor for that, so thank you, Dr. Exstrom.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. We just provided a final report. I just want to talk about the next steps before Dr. Exstrom kind of goes through this. And we will take the report as a whole and disseminate it to all of our leaders and really, really do a deep dive with our new special ed and student service administration and identify, you know, what recommendations we can implement if appropriate, what things we may have already started to implement, and really kind of proceed from there. Next week, I think next Friday, I will be doing a parent square to provide this data to the community, but I will also, because this was something that was provided by a town meeting to us, I will send it to our town meeting members as well so they can see what their money went towards and know the process that will follow to ensure that we're doing the best for special ed and student services that we can.
Okay. Great. Well, I actually would just like to start by just saying thank you. This has been an honor to be here and to work with Norwood Public Schools and getting to know the ins and outs of the school in many different facets. And I also want to thank my team. There's actually 10 of us that were on the team that did this research in the various areas of the focus areas of the work. So I thank them and commend them for their hard work as well. So I'm just going to just start by honestly saying to you that Norwood has so many wonderful, great strengths. So when you hear some of the areas of recommendations, keep in mind that also in that report, I hope you can see the reflection of the great things that are happening in Norwood as well. But our job is to find where there's always areas of improvement. So I want to keep that, you know, that in the forefront of our conversation here tonight. But so this, it was a very extensive program review, and so I actually, for tonight, just for the sake of trying to streamline your 529 or 530-page document here down to just different categories. So I wanted to just explain to the committee the actual methodology of what we did, focus on the areas of research for everybody's recommendation reference, but also to talk a little bit about where our findings were and some of the recommendations. There's more in the report. I just wanted to bring to you some of the highlights that I felt that were the most significant to be considering. So our methodology, we actually met first with Mr. Luff and talked, and also with Dr. Munez and Mr. Minihan, to talk a little bit about what is this procedure going to look like and how are we going to dive into those seven focus areas. Also, I believe you were just coming on board right after I was selected for this. So interestingly enough, we actually know each other from his previous position as well. So I was excited to hear that we got this, and then when I heard who your superintendent was, I said, oh, so he knows me. So he knows I'm going to be very honest and upfront with this work. So we created some draft questions for the surveys, interviews, and focus groups. We don't ever bring questions forward to staff members or to parents or to students by any means unless we know that they've been vetted and approved by the administration in the school system.
Could I add there, Dr. Exstrom, that I was asked, rightfully so, not to share those questions with anyone else, which is why you guys didn't have them either.
Right. We do that for the validity of the research. If people know ahead of time the questions, then they could also be preparing and conversing to one another. It's just a natural human being in our nature of doing that. So we kindly ask that we keep those confidential. So then we created and distributed and analyzed the survey results. We reviewed documents provided by the district. We created interviews, focus groups, observations. We did the schedules, and we also facilitated the sessions among the 10 of us in our group. We then created a midterm report, and then from there, we continued with our work and developed the final report that you received. So just to give you a little understanding of how extensive this actually was, the survey responses, we had 274 participants. The interviews, there were 270 questions across approximately 69 settings. Focus groups, we had 201 questions across 23 focus groups that included a total of 84 individuals. Observations, we observed 46 classrooms, inclusion substantially separate and co-teaching classrooms. The documents, we had over 196 documents that we were provided by the district that we reviewed. So these are the seven focus areas that we looked at in this program review. The first was looking at the specialized services and programming. The second was looking at your comparative analysis of your specialized program, looking specifically at your substantially separate programs, how, what are the profile of the students or their entrance and exit guidelines that are clearly identified. And then we looked at the evaluation analysis of your multilingual learners. And the fourth area was looking at your counseling services and what you're looking for criteria for your counselors. The fifth area was evaluating the school nurse staffing levels and looking at all the school nurse staffing. That then fed into focus area six, which looked at your health services. So the same team did focus areas five and six. And then focus area seven was looking at your financial analysis as well as your cost distribution. So in the first focus area, a lot of great things that we actually saw in review of your specialized services and programming. The first was that you have high student engagement. So there was a consistent theme across most of your elementary observations that we saw. The students were very well engaged in those classrooms, which we really loved to see. There was a very high observational note of their participation and their excitement for learning, which that's what we want to see, right? The push-in services, we saw a nice push-in service model that was observed in your elementary classrooms as well. Co-teaching, I'm going to say, you're going to see this both as a promise and as an area of growth, right? So the area of promise with the co-teaching is the fact that you did have teachers that really were working together, okay? They were really working, supporting students. They were both moving around the room when we saw them interacting with one another. But in some cases, we couldn't tell if this was a special ed teacher or the general ed teacher actually teaching, which is exactly what we want to see. So we saw a lot of good pockets of that practice. As well as individualized support, we saw that more in the substantially separate classrooms. We saw that the teachers were really engaging to make sure that the students really understood what the expectation was of the classroom. So that was really the highlights, the big highlights that we saw. For the areas of growth, when we went into the general education classrooms, there was a lack of differentiated instruction in the classrooms that we observed. Keeping in mind that when we do do our observations, they are just a pocket of time, right? So it's like what I call a dipstick of an observation because you're in there for 20 to 30 minutes of one class of one day of one time, so keep that in mind. However, we did not see across, we look at the themes, and our theme was, there was, there really lacked a lot of differentiation that was happening in the general education classrooms. Modifications were also, while some modifications were observed, there were instances where we did not see any modifications happening. In some cases, we also were able to talk with some of the teachers if the students were doing independent work, and they were able to explain some of the modifications that we would not have necessarily seen in the classroom. But we did count that as an observed because the teacher did have the opportunity to explain to us. Now, I said to you that we saw a high level of engagement was observed in the classrooms. What the area of growth is, was that the unspecified engagement levels were noted in other areas. So the consistencies of strategies were not always consistent. So we saw pockets, right? And so some of this engagement that we saw that was lacking was a little bit more in your secondary level in those classrooms. We saw a little bit less. Now, some of that can be a little bit adolescent, right? We see some of that happening with adolescents, but it's still our job to find ways of engaging. So that's really where we saw a lot of that, mostly at the secondary level. Also, in some of our recommendations was to enhance your differentiated instruction, thinking about your professional development. I do want to say and commend that your professional development, you have a lot of great options for your teachers across the district for professional development. I think what you have to do from this report, if you go into the survey results and see actually general ed versus special education and really zone in, we try to separate that out just so you could see where those needs are a little bit more. Clearly, I would actually think more about targeted professional development, right? Looking at more specifically who requires that differentiated instruction. If you're going to go with that co-teaching, you had some great areas of, you know, I would probably look at, in your own district, you have some teachers that could be the role model, that could be the peer walk-through classrooms to go and see, but there's some pockets that if you do want to strengthen that co-teaching practice, I would specifically think about training some of the other teachers that want to expand or go into that model. There were also suggestions from teachers requesting some specific training on the co-teaching and differentiation, which is, that also should be a positive to think about, right? Teachers are self-reflecting that they want this type of training. And then I also would suggest some visual aids, agendas, and learning targets. We did not see a consistency in the classrooms of ICANN statements or learning objectives or visual aids in the classrooms. There were not really clear identified agendas in the room. That is extremely important, especially for language-based disabilities, students with, you know, executive functioning concerns, attention issues, behavioral concerns because they don't know. And so there's also a lot of research out there that explains that when teachers are able to provide learning targets on a regular basis, when those are provided on a regular basis in the classroom, beginning of the lesson, the middle of the lesson, the end of the lesson, not only does it keep the teacher on track, but it allows the students as a reminder of what is the purpose of the lesson. Oftentimes, students didn't know the purpose of why they were taking this lesson or why they were doing that activity. So that's a recommendation.
Is Zoe a member of your team?
Zoe's a friend of mine, actually, on this team. She was our counseling team.
Just do that and then I'll let you. You can't see, you can't.
So focus area two, the areas of promise, there was a lot of strong collaboration was noted between administration and the staff, whereas they had weekly meetings, principals, team chairs. There was a large community of appreciation for administration from the interviews and focus groups. Staff really expressed their appreciation for the work that the leaders in the community do. Parent advocacy really shown that there was a lot of great reflexive discussions from parents, whether it be in the surveys or in the focus groups. And then there was a high number of students on IEPs as a concern. There was an awareness. So the first step is, we are aware that we have a high, we have a high number, and we knew that we have to make a shift in our practice. That is step number one. And so to see that there was a lot of recognition in that, I consider that as a promise because you already understand the purpose of why this is being done. Using special education program is the foundation for building master schedules. We heard that a couple of times, which is a strategic approach, and it's highly recommended that when you create your overall schedules in your school, you start with the students on an IEP. Those are contracts. So you start with them first, and then you build your schedules from there. And we did hear some schools actually taking that approach, which was great. And then to hear that the district is considering this transition to co-teaching is very encouraging. There was concerns in this report, and that was reported to us, about some of the qualifications of some of the paraprofessional input, although they appreciated the pairs and they loved the pairs, there was concern in some cases. So to hear that you're going to maybe potentially move towards this co-teaching or expanding that co-teaching, bringing the highly qualified staff into those classrooms was great. Area of growth, there was, in monitoring IEP compliance, there seemed to be a lack of a centralized approach, district-wide systemic approach to ensuring that all the IEP, I'm not saying they're not compliant, but there's not a systemic approach. When I asked about it, it was very hard to give me an answer, or we don't have a system in this situation. So I would highly recommend that there's a system put into place. The lack of targeting training, so like I said, although you have a lot of great professional development, there are some that felt that some of their PD is not relevant to their role or to their need. So I would suggest looking at how can you target some of your professional development. Specifically, paraprofessionals wanted to focus on aligning their roles and their backgrounds with what they're expected to do. And they felt, in some cases, they kind of felt like they were just kind of placed in a position and they didn't really know enough, and they didn't feel confident. And you know, if you don't feel confident in something, you know, you're feeling uncomfortable that wears off. And then also, there were concerns around the understanding of the IEP process. There were also concerns around understanding the roles and responsibilities of the D cap. This was a big concern. I will tell you that I have been doing trainings on the new IEP this past year across many districts across Massachusetts and in Rhode Island. And the D cap is becoming our number one conversation. It is part of Mass General Law. It's section 38q and a half. I think you and I had that conversation.
We did.
Right? That it is a part of Mass General Law, and it's an expectation that all educators must provide accommodations to students regardless of whether they have a disability or not. And so because it's the law, we should be very familiar with it. And there were a lot of teachers that didn't know about it. There were a lot of parents that didn't know about it. So it's a conversation that should be, but I will say to you, Norwood is not, that is the norm. Norwood is not unusual in that sense. This has become a big conversation. And so there's also concerns around the increase, obviously, in your out-of-district placements and where that's coming from. Recommendations, again, is to implement that centralized district-wide system, provide some targeted professional development, and then also develop some standardized data collection methods. So thinking about your professional development on data analysis, using that data to drive the instruction, but also how do you know that professional development is having an impact? You provide a lot of great opportunities for your PD. How do you know the impact of that? What is your follow-up of that PD? What is that professional development actual plan? And then thinking about the strategies to support that multi-tiered system of support. You know, thinking about, you have new leadership, so that's one of your, you know, one of the big directives, right? Directors, if you will, of multi-system, the multi-tiered system of support. You have that, you have a lot of people that are competent, so you have that competencies. It's really looking at that implementation driver, right? What are we doing with that? So I would say, thinking that through, what could you put here for your tier two and making sure you have a strong tiered one system. Focus area three, your area of promise, this is looking at multilingual learners. We highly, you have highly committed staff that are really into supporting students. Many staff you have are SEI endorsed, which is a huge, or retail training. They practice strategies such as the current country of origin programs. There were actual examples of that in observations and in conversations and in discussions. The teachers and principals, they use Access Renaissance Dibbels to collect the data, which is fantastic. That's all culturally responsive. You have a strong infrastructure in your community, in this area in regards to communicating with families. That is huge. And then also, you have a successful, I mean, I think you should take your newcomer programming. It's very unique, and I think you need to advertise it. I mean, it's just, you have a great newcomer approach to that. As for the areas of growth, your ESL teachers serve multiple grades in schools, which is eliminating, which is reducing their ability to really which is eliminating, which is reducing their ability to really take that deeper co-planning or, um, and I know it's hard because with staffing and the numbers, it's always hard, but keep that in mind or try to think of how you could strategically um, schedule so that they actually do have that time to work with the teachers. Um, co-teaching implementation obviously is rare because they're moving in so many different schools. You do have a district-wide curriculum, however, it's not being used with fidelity. So there's not a continuity across the district and re- using that. And in many cases, teachers are actually developing their own materials. Um, and then your instructional practice indicates um, low expectations of student achievement based on the observable tasks in some of the grades. So doing some observations, looking at where is that rigor, what are we expecting them to do? And how can we bring them a little bit up beyond their zone of proximal development, right? Bring them beyond their comfort zone and then know that they're, that you're still there for that support to keep moving. Um, the intake process, including the administration of the Wieder screener, um, is hampered by time, staffing, um, and tools. And so what's happening is these provisional placements are being delayed for students when they are entering your school. And then lastly, while principals are documenting these observations and evaluations, they do not consistently incorporate or provide this feedback on SEI or language practices um, without that ELE director support. So try to figure out, how can we build that confidence and that competence with your administration so that they don't always need that director there for the support for all that work? Recommendations, um, pilot a co-teaching model with built-in um, CPT at selected sites. Um, create flexible scheduling that ensures that your ESL and your SEI uh, general education teachers can collaborate. Um, build tiered professional learning series. So this is a a great approach that we've seen um, in other districts as well, where you actually have different tiers of courses that you could actually provide to teachers where they can be watching at their own time and availability. Streamline and strengthen your M, um, your ML intake process. So think about how can you do this in a more timely manner? And then update and clarify your special education referral processes that includes MLs. Focus area four is your development of your counseling services criteria. Again, a lot of great, great strengths here. Um, in the buildings where there were multiple um, school adjustment counselors or behavioral interventionists were present, they shared the responsibilities, which was great to see that they actually had a teamwork, which actually reduces that, you know, that burden on one person, but it actually helps to support and they can interweave, right, their ideas and their thoughts. So that's, that's a great strategy that you have here. Um, despite systemic challenges, they are all highly dedicated. They um, want to continue to support students. They were all student-centered in their responses, very much about students. Um, and then the um, addition of a third um, adjustment counselor actually helped reduce some of the caseloads to thirty-five students, uh, which is very commendable that you did that. And then um, your, they pri- um, primarily serve students with IEPs. Um, and also the monthly, they have monthly consultation with with um, McLean Hospital staff, which is very beneficial for them. It gives them some strategies and some work that they can do and it shows you some outreach that they work on.
Dr. Armstrong, could I clarify?
Yes.
You may not know, but um, Dr. Mina's the third SAC, that's what we had at last year at the Willet. Is that what we're referencing at the elementary level?
I don't know what they're referencing, but we did add a SAC at the Willet.
Do you know what that was referencing?
We can ask Zoe. Zoe, do you know which one that we were working on?
Yeah, that actually was referencing the high school. The high school staff felt as if their caseload was much more um, manageable this year. And I don't know if it was this year or last year, that there was a third school adjustment counselor added in. And uh, before that, they felt like they were really completely overwhelmed uh, with keeping up with their caseload and it was much better this year.
So maybe you shifted some of the staff?
Yeah, I think at the high school, we only have two, right, Kate?
Um, well, Amy Joyce left and the person they were referencing replaced her.
Oh, okay.
But hopefully we did add.
Hopefully we added.
We had two point fours.
And and we did add at the elementary level.
And yes, at Willet adding of adjustment counselors.
Yeah.
And I'm happy to bring the committee, kind of an update on where we added when and how how that trajectory has gone to.
Yeah.
Just so we have that clear.
Yeah, and I I know there's like the five hundred pages and almost through it, but I'm just also trying to.
I know, it's your whole summer read, probably, right?
I'll have it done by Monday. Um, but I'm also just trying to align this with decisions we've made over the last two school years.
Sure, sure.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's great. Um, and then for your areas of growth, um, there was a lack of standardized referral systems. So you do not currently have a district-wide or even um, a building consistent referral process. Um, so when you're looking at counseling services, even within the building, there's some fragmentation um, as well as across the district. So to create an, you know, a s- um, a task force or or um, you know, a counseling group that could work across the district to create a systemic pro- um, protocol or approach would be great and including special education in that conversation is important. Um, there's also an inconsistent involvement in student support teams and goal development. So um, they're not always included in your SST meetings. And yet sometimes it becomes that they are required to service students, but they have not always been a part of that initial process. So that can become challenging. Um, your SAC has reported that there's no protected um, planning time and limited collaboration opportunities. And then they are available, um, professional development is often irrelevant. So this is another area where we'd say, you know, what would be a need for them? Or where would a focus be to support your adjustment counselors in their professional development? Um, and then they also report that there's no significant relationship with upper district administration um, and desire greater visibility from the central office. Um, so recommendations is um, a systemized referral and intake process, improving your interdisciplinary um, communication and inclusion in decision-making. Have your adjustment counselors um, need um, professional development opportunities that are tailored. It would be really towards their clinical skills or mental health expertise. So oftentimes, they often will know some of the pieces or are outside providers that can provide some information, especially where they consult with McLean Hospital. There might be some opportunities that McLean could potentially come and provide them some PD maybe from time to time. Um, and then also, um, they feel professionally isolated and express a desire for more cohesive integration within the school structures, which is something to think about. Area five is evaluating the school nurse staffing levels. So all the nurses in the district have a registered um, and RN degree and a basic life support certification, so, um, and many, I think, if not all, actually have school nurse experience from previous prior um, experiences. They feel prepared to to take care of students for complex medical needs. Um, they are proud of the fact that their substitute nurses actually utilize the SNAP program, which is the nursing program. And I will say there are many districts that don't, so that is a huge plus uh, to hear that you are are doing that and you have the same computer system. Um, the nurses uh, were described as empathetic. They were very compassionate with what they do. Um, and they, you know, unquestionably, the parents of the students with moderate medical needs within the district, they consistently reported that they felt very confident with the nurses and the school nurses that you have here. Areas for growth, there were concerns regarding the licensure of some nursing staff, which um, the superintendent and I have had a couple of conversations about that. Um, some nurses do not always feel supported while caring for students with complex medical needs. Um, and there are not enough um, substitute nurses. So when there's no substitute nurse available, um, and the nurse covers for the middle school or a high school, that could leave one nurse to handle over five hundred students. Um, and that is not a Norwood issue. I just wanna clarify for everybody's sake, that is a a nationwide issue, unfortunately. Um, there are also several paraprofessionals that actually had concerns about some of the availability or accessibility of the school nurse. Um, while they appreciate the school nurses and they absolutely, I, it was not about the people, it's about the fact of their availability, uh, when uh, there's a situation that arises. Um, they feel the nurse is, has already somebody else that they have to be working with and it's it's very challenging sometimes. Um, and then there's a significant area of um, concern around the unclear collaboration between the nursing department and the special education department. Um, and actually, that was observed in some of my interviews as well in asking um, with the special education about some of the nursing questions, is there a lack of the administrative knowledge and awareness of the of the going-ons with um, some of the health department? Um, and then committee members also questioned whether the staffing ratios were adequately met. Um, and there's concerns about that. Um, and my, um, well, we can go into the recommendations, actually. The recommendation is really ensuring the appropriate nurses' resources. So in some situations, in some buildings, um, you have some students with some medical needs and which is fine, many districts do. The situation is that arises is when you have one nurse there and they have to tend to the medical need, whatever that may be. Um, if another student comes in that has an emergency or like, let's just say even like a nosebleed or has a flu or something, that nurse is not accessible to be able to help that individual while dealing with the medical needs. So the recommendation on that is really thinking about how you're allocating your resources to ensure that when us, when, you know, some of those medical needs are like by this time, at this time, we have to do this and at this time, we have to do that. So where you know where those regular medical needs are is to try to allocate resources over into those particular buildings to make sure that the nurse has that extra set of hands um, when needed. Um, and also inform the school committee about the need for additional school nurse resources and supports. I think the school committee is very interested in wanting to know that information. So I suggest that, you know, we, we suggest that you actually let the school committee be aware of that. Um, and so potentially help with some of the mandated screenings, like the postural screenings. Um, the physical education teachers do help at some extent in some schools, but it would be nice if they can't, then other places such as like Regis College um, or community colleges and universities could have um, interns to come in and to help during that as well. Um, and then to develop a float pool so that you can have an increased number of of substitute nurses um, for coverage. I often used to recommend when I was a leader of an educational um, system is, you know, reach out to the local hospitals or reach out to the local, um, if you have like urgent care or ready med centers or things like that and put it out there that you're looking for substitute nurses and that oftentimes will increase your substitute pool as well. Um, areas of promise for the analysis of the school health services. Nurses have put precautions in place to avoid the exposure of students with life-threatening allergies. Um, that is amazing. Um, they've done that, that's great. Uh, the nurses do get help with postural screenings, like I said earlier, with some of the elementary and middle school. Um, but it, uh, the high school, however, needs some additional support. Um, and then the family focus group expressed that the nurses are proactive. They answer their calls in a timely manner. And then the school committee also acknowledged the multifaceted support um, provided by the health services for students with the nursing in in the um, Norwood Public Schools. And, you know, I think everyone that um, this team spoke to really spoke so highly of the dedication and the commitment of your nurses, um, the hardworking of your nurses and and so. Um, areas of growth, um, again, we know this, not enough substitute nurses. Um, they don't always have PD that reflects their needs as well. So in thinking about working with McLean for counseling, you may wanna do that for health. Um, nurses also have concerns about calling in sick. Um, they call, I guess, a different number than the rest of the staff. And so they are often, and then when they do that, they're often asked why they are sick. So they actually are feeling guilty of calling in sick. Um, so it's just something to to think about. And there's um, a lot of food around in many buildings. And so while they're trying to maintain the health and the wellness and and to be cognizant of allergies, sometimes staff bring in food, sometimes families bring in food. It's very inconsistent, um, so, you know, that's an area of concern. And then there's, um, often there are no safe spots in the classroom for children with allergies to eat their snack. So if students have allergies, you know, um, they're not made to sit at a nut-free table in the cafeteria. Um, that's inconsistent, so thinking that through. And then one parent um, also uh, would like to see the school nurse involved in the school orientation process. So it's something to consider moving forward. Recommendations, um, we know this, it sounds repetitive, so I'm gonna just not say it again. Um, but develop a strategic plan for recruitment for your for your school nurses. Um, have the school nurse speak occasionally at staff meetings about current health issues. Um, put, um, set rules into place regarding the food in your buildings. Um, they also need to be a part of those conversations and those decisions that you make. And do a comprehensive review of the interaction between the health services and the special education department that has come through in uh, multiple facets. Area seven is the financial analysis and cost distribution. Um, we feel that, you know, the school committee is very proactive in this exploration, so we commend you for that and looking at the efficiencies. Um, we also feel that um, this forward thinking is really going to help optimize some high-quality um, educational systems in putting them in place. The budgets, um, they clearly, there's an alignment with the administrative budget, um, requesting further underscores, um, the school committee's strong support, so that's um, commendable. There's a consistent and increasing trend of Medicaid claims that reflects the growing demand, but also the fact that you're staying on top of those Medicaid claims is great. That's not always, I do a lot of Medicaid audits and a lot of circuit breaker audits and that's not the case. So to see that you're you're staying on top of that is great. Um, your rise of your circuit breaker reimbursement is another piece. Um, it shows, although it shows your number of your out-of-district, you also are very responsive with looking at your in-district programming and and looking at that as well. Um, so you're in, you know, you have a lot of interconnectedness between your budgetary practices and service provisions. So your reimbursement claims and you're really showing a strong um, foundation there. There areas of growth, um, your students on IEPs is twenty-four point three percent compared to the state average of twenty point six. Um, in looking at that area, I just wanna go off of this for one minute. In a lot, there's a lot of um, staff that expressed they were very much committed into inclusive practices. They were very much committed into supporting students of all all um, abilities in their classrooms. What also came through through this whole review was at the same time, there's a lack of understanding of differentiation. There's a, there's a, there's a concern that came up to us a little bit about the MTSS and where is your tiered one and how strong, a very strong universal design in your tier one will eliminate a lot of the referrals of your special needs students coming out. So we always say a strong general education is a low percentage of special education. So thinking that through a little bit and um, just thinking about what type of interventions and tiered supports can be put into place. How, you know, some of the trainings, maybe like um, UDL trainings, you know, universal um, design for learning. Um, and so when compared to twenty similar districts, um, Norwood ranked at the top twenty-five percent on your student-to-staff ratio, um, you have a lot of staff for the amount of students on your IEPs in special education. Um, some of that could be some of your scheduling that you're looking at. Some of it can be looking at your tiered systems. I think if you really strengthen your MTSS, a lot of this will start to naturally, um, start to be reduced. Um, a point of concern is the administration's perception of the budget process. Um, a point of concern is the administration's perception of the budget process, um, in talking with a, a lot of the administration, um, there was an indication that, well, if they put them in out of district, doesn't necessarily directly impact their budget. And so that shows us that there is actually a lack of understanding of the whole budgetary process. So that would be, um, because the money's gotta come from somewhere, right? So, thinking that through a little bit more and having more of those conversations. The district has a substantial number of special education teachers, you have seven point three per every hundred students, your paraprofessionals, you have fourteen point two per every hundred students. That's ranking the sixth and seventh out of your twenty comparable districts that were provided to us. Um, and then there's the unfamiliarity of most staff with the D cap, which again, if you strengthen this and strengthen the D cap, understanding the accommodations that need to happen, all of this will naturally start to fall into place. Um, and then your grant funding for staff salaries. If you look in, I believe in FY twenty-five, um, Judy, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I believe in the, um, in this year's, in your two forty grant, you had twenty FTEs in your two forty grant. Um, and that's been i- increasing. What you want to be careful of is when you have professional staff in your grants, federal grants, you are paying the MTRS twice. So if you think of nine percent being taken out twice and you have twenty staff members, you know, that's, you know, nine percent approximately, let's say, one point four million dollars is a lot of money that you're paying extra that you don't need to if in fact they are professional staff. You can put professional staff in your two forty grant in the summer and it would go under contracted services and it doesn't impact the MTRS because they're not, they're school-based employees, school-year employees, and the summer's not a school year, so they would go in as a contracted service, that's how you can get them in, and that's how you try to move things around a little bit. It becomes a, a more or less like a two or three-year process of shifting the staff out into, in because you can't supplant your funds. So it's as somebody new comes in, they would go there, so if somebody leaves and they're in the two forty grant, you then put them into your general fund budget, if you have a new out-of-district placement, you put that into your two forty grant. You can't take something that's already into place and put it there.
And if I may, Dr. Exter, um, you know, we are in the process of doing that, one of the three-year processes here is we're also cognizant of, um, benefit packages, which are currently grant-funded, when we move them over to the operation, they go to the town, so we've been considering that piece as well and the impact on the debt.
Great. Um, recommendations, ensure that all administrators are actively involved in the budget process. Um, this will help to increase their understanding, especially the costs that have been incurred with your new out-of-district placements. Um, provide a targeted professional development through, um, through this process, really thinking about, you know, how do you promote inclusive practices and strengthening that MTSS process? And then review the schedules and caseloads of related service providers to ensure they are providing small group sessions whenever possible, not looking at one-to-one sessions, one-to-one should not be the norm, one-to-one, and what I mean by related services is your occupational therapy, your physical therapy, your speech-language pathology, one-to-one is, should not, should be the outlier, not the norm when providing services, and they should also be trying to do more push-in than pull-out. Um, remove professional staff from the grants as soon as possible without supplanting, and then reconsider the scheduling of your special education students to allow more students in, in one classroom, which would be eliminating some of the need of some of your additional paraprofessionals or, and/or special ed teachers.
Like, I have a question for that one.
Yes, please.
With the scheduling of special education teachers, there's also a limit to how many, like, depending on what it is, so I'm, I'm a secondary person, so that's what I think of and, like, you know, sometimes the way schedules are built is, this is the supported class or this is the supported class for this level, for this grade.
Yep.
So, I had a question about that, I also had a question around some of the, like, um, D cap stuff.
Yep.
Right? Good D cap stuff is, uh, and I'll use my own teaching example, is, like, teachers build it in. So, for instance, like, I gave out study guides normally, that's an example of that and, and most teachers follow that, so if you're not seeing it, I'm, I would be interested to know more and see more where, you know, is it that we're not seeing it or was it the day that we saw them, they weren't doing that, but that it's, it, it is more ingrained in getting more into the, um, sort of nitty-gritty of those two.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great, um, that's a great comment and, and some great thoughts. I think, you know, when you do a program review like this and we're looking at the big picture in all of these different areas, all of the program reviews, um, typically end up where it allows us to wonder, right? And it causes that wonder, and so this tweaks an idea that now will cause the administration to go in and start looking with that target in mind and to say, okay, what is that actually that's happening, how is that actually not happening or is happening and how often? And so it gives your administrators, when they start doing their own walkthroughs and their observations, a point of reference to start focusing on. Um, but I do think that, you know, when we looked in the classrooms and if you look at our, our, in the report, the number of teachers that didn't have the visuals and didn't have the agendas and didn't have, that's telling in and of itself, you know, if there were two teachers or four teachers out of ten teachers, mm, okay, maybe it was the day, but it was quite significant, so that's where you really want to look at those types of pieces. In regards to, um, the scheduling, you're absolutely right, um, it, it does end up becoming that, um, where you have, okay, this is a class and maybe it's an honors class, but you still have six students in this honors class, but you need to have a support in there, whereas if you have two here and two here, two here, you're not really being efficient either, right?
But, but running a school, like, welcome to public schools, where I, I tell people all the time, like, we can have these conversations and I could design to you and describe in detail what my dream would be, and the reality is legally, what do they say? Like, if somebody's gotta be there or if there are only a certain amount of kids that sign up for one section, we are, and I say we, meaning people in the buildings, are incredibly constrained with what we can do because we are so, there are so many regulations that we've gotten to the point where, you know, and to your point, I mean, I talk about you can't find nurses, like, this is gonna be education the next ten years, nobody wants to do this work anymore be- because of this, so. It, I, hear what you're saying and I appreciate it, but it just, it's, you know, it's.
I know, it will, if it was easy, it wouldn't be up here as a recommendation, right? So I think that's the other piece, it is a challenge, these are some of your challenges. You have so many wonderful aspects in your district, um, you know, this is just a, a recommendation of just, you know, reconsider and, and to just review the schedules and when you put the schedules in mind, schedule it with the students with disabilities first and oftentimes it, it falls into place a little bit more simplistic as it goes in a very complex situation, right? So, the overall thoughts, um, again, you have very dedicated staff who admire and appreciate their community and their district, the school committee, you're proactive in, in researching and looking at your most efficient and effective practices, um, how to prioritize, um, you know, the findings, like, what do I do, we have all these pages and all these recommendations. I think really the, the big piece to me would be looking at your inclusive practices, looking at the MTSS, that's really where I would start. And then thinking that in mind and creating that framework and maybe you already have one, I don't know, but if you have that framework, they say, okay, then where do we find the weaknesses in this report and how, that's where your targeted PD has to go, that's how I would look at it and looking at some of your in-district programming needs. Um, there was one question though that did come out and I think, yep, so there was a question that had come out prior, um, is to consider the current on, uh, on page five ten, um, it was focus area seven, and it stated to consider the current in-district programs to ensure they are meeting the needs of students currently enrolled in out-of-district placements, so, and then are there models of school districts that are successfully doing this? So I gave you a list, um, out of the comparable districts, the twenty comparable districts, this was a list of districts that actually were below your average, um, we had in the report eight percent, but if you look at the most recent, you're actually almost nine percent at this point, um, so this was when the data was collected versus now, and the state average is at six point six percent. So, um, thinking that through, those are some districts that you could potentially, um, reach out, you know, your new special education director could also reach out to them and talk to them, um, and see, um, you know, what, what they're doing differently. I do know that Hopkington, their special education director just retired, so she's not there, they'll have a new face, um, but then.
Dr. Exter, when you say comparable, you mean district size? What, 'cause, 'cause financially, we're not comparable to most of those, so Ashland, Medfield, Westwood and Hopkington.
Demographically.
Are, and, and demographically also, I, Falmouth and Waymouth were DART districts, I don't know if they still currently are, but I know they were last year, so, so what do you mean by comparable?
So, yep, so your, um, administration provide us, provided us with the districts that they wanted us to compare you to. So those are the districts that I was given in regards to the comparable.
And you go as a combination of the DART districts and some also some surrounding districts.
Yes.
That's what it was.
So it's not only the DARTs, 'cause some of those are scattered around the state, but also some of our directly surrounding districts.
Yeah, just, I, from so many, many, many conversations and debates I've had over the years with like FinCom and Board of Selectmen, they always go to Westwood.
Oh.
And I always say, don't compare us to Westwood, um.
But what you could do in this case is in regards to comparability.
Yeah.
In this particular situation and thinking this through, you could at least go and see what systems they have in place, right? And so if anything else, rather than whether that you consider them personally comparable or not.
Yeah.
I would go to them and to find out what is their system that they have in place, what is their MTSS that they have aligned, how are they creating programs that are in district programs that they could support students, right? So what strategies have they put into place? That is really what I would suggest in this case.
Okay, that's helpful.
And then the next slide, um, is also are there models of the school districts, um, that are successful? So, I would say, this is my recommendation because this is the strategy that I have done with other districts as well as when I also was a special education director and a superintendent of schools, um, this is an approach that we often did, right, is, um, we looked at the students that were going in out-of-district placements, what is their actual disability, is there a commonality of a disability? Are there, what is the age that they are at when they're going out? Is it a particular school that seems to be that referral? And if so, then what's the cause analysis for that, right? Is it that that school doesn't have a program, is it that school needs a supports in, in management, like, what is that piece? And I don't mean management leadership, I mean in, in the culture, right, the cultural management of that, of acceptances. So identify that, and then I also would say, is there a weakness within the school system as a whole? Um, I also look at the students that are similar profiles, so let's say I had a, a group of students that were, um, students with, um, let's use social-emotional, and they have, and I would pull, as a special education director, I would pull all their profiles and I would be reading their IEPs very closely, I'd also be looking at their age difference because you can have students in the same program that legally within forty-eight month range, right? So, do you have that within that profile? Um, and then I would look at, is there a way of creating, what do we have in district right now? What is the qualifications of our staff, do we shift our staff to different roles to support this type of programming? How can I get my parents involved? If you're looking at students, so I have created programs where we've brought students from out-of-district placements, we've brought them back in district. And I've created eight, an eighteen to twenty-two transition program, so don't think because they're already in tenth grade, no, because if they're gonna be eighteen to twenty-two, really look at your robust programming, right? We created an eighteen to twenty-two program, I created therapeutic programmings as well. The big piece, I will say to all of you, this is great numbers in looking at statistics. My recommendation is when you're pulling in and you're thinking of creating a program in-house that's going to support, the number one thing you have to do is train your staff and explain to staff. Oftentimes people will say, oh, we're gonna bring in this program next year, it becomes the gossip train and nobody knows and it's everybody's fear because they haven't been involved in the process. So educate your staff, educate your parents, educate your families, and have your families be a part of that process, have your teachers be a part of that process, and really have it be a collab, and that's how it will be successful. And then, um, so this was an example here, if I look at, there were two that really stuck out, which is your, um, autism program and your, uh, students with autism and, uh, students with emotional disabilities were your highest two categories of students, and if you look at where they're at, you can see, um, elementary, you have right now six students at the elementary level that have autism there in out-of-district placements and you have twenty-eight students at the secondary level that are in out-of-district placements for autism. And for emotional, elementary, you have seven, and at the secondary, you have twelve students. So to me, that's where I would explore first. In, in looking at that, those are your highest numbers.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Of course.
We, we've talked quite a lot about those two categories over the years with the Stadia and Missamino, um, and the autism population in particular, um, did you look at the Little Mustangs Preschool Academy?
Yes.
Did you, did, um, it's probably in the five hundred pages I haven't got to yet, but is there an analysis of like the EI referral and, um, 'cause we have a little bit of notice to get ready for the kids, but we've been seeing that population really grow at the preschool level, so are, are, is there analysis and recommendations around that in our report?
Not specifically.
Okay.
Not specifically. Um, what I can say to you is that your program, when we observed the program, it was, um, it was very well established, so we would have, if, if we had children that had that profile that were in, you know, into your preschool, we would feel very comfortable. We felt your preschool really has a lot of, um, a lot of positive things to say about your preschool. Um, and the programming and the support that is provided in your preschool, so, um, you, again, it's not unknown to Norwood, I'm, I'm doing two other program reviews right now, that their highest pop, the highest percentage of students with disabilities is the autism.
Yeah.
Where every building has their own autism program, and they have, I think, twenty-three schools, and so are twenty-five schools, and every single building has at least one autism program in their schools, so. But, you know, in looking at that, I will say to you, um, the New England Center for Children, NECC, the May Institute, um, there's others as well, but those are just the two that are sticking off the top of my head right now, um, they have great resources to help you create partnership programs in your schools. They have great resources to help to educate, to support, to consult, um, so if you're looking at, at that as an option, that is there. I, I, when I was a special education director in two districts, um, two different districts, we had the NECC partnership programs in our school. I don't own stock in them, I'm not a part of them, I promise, but I will say to you, I mean, it's, it's, um, it, when I was a special education director and then when I was a principal at that particular school, that elementary school, we also had the NECC partnership there as well. And sometimes you have them there temporarily, right, and you, you get to know and you get to work and it's kind of like a fading out, right? They're, they're there, they give you the supports and they can fade out, so, um, it's, it is tricky when you have partnership programs, and I'm not recommending that you do that, but I just want to say you, it can be tricky because sometimes some of their staff are not on the same union contract as what you have, so that's a whole other.
Right.
That's a whole other piece to think about, but it's just, you know, it's not just like, oh, well, we'll just get them and bring them in, there's a lot of process and a lot of planning with that too. But they're great at helping, helping the students, even if they're non-verbal, to be able to be interacting in the general education classrooms.
Agreed.
Well, I thank you for the opportunity, thank you so much.
Are there questions from my colleagues? Is Anne Marie on now too? I think I called her.
I guess so, her.
Yeah, okay, so Anne Marie LaZola joined the meeting, uh, during that presentation.
I am.
You know what, if you have questions at any other time, please.
Did they tell you to censor me?
No.
I didn't know.
No. Should he have? No.
No, it would be JJ if anybody told you to censor me, no, I'm joking.
No, no, but, um, if you have any questions anyway, you can just, you know, your superintendent has my phone and you can just call me at any time and, and, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions. And, and you know, I'm happy to answer any questions at any time. Or as you start going through this and trying to, it's a lot to process, it's a lot to take in. And so if you start saying, wait, where did this come from or what have you, just, just reach out to us. We're accessible, we can, or if you start to put PD in place and you're thinking, I'm not sure what would this look like, or just reach out to us, we're happy to help.
I do have one broad question.
Sure.
So I, I thought part of this audit was looking at five oh fours. Is that embedded throughout the areas of focus?
So we didn't focus a lot on five oh fours. We focused mostly on special education. There were some five oh four questions and surveys, and those are reflected in the report.
So when you were referencing, and, and maybe it's different in different areas, but when you were referencing like students with disabilities, are you referencing only those who qualify for an IEP, not our kids on five oh fours with disabilities?
That's correct. That is correct.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Take care.
Nice to meet you all. Good to see some of you in person.
Thank you.
And again, we'll continue to do a deep dive into the report and really kind of take a look at it as a team and kind of move forward from there. I'm sure there's more to come on this as we move forward.
Superintendent Luff, I know I spoke with you earlier, but this obviously touches like every corner of both school committee and administration work. There's a lot of budgetary questions, there's clearly some policy work we have to do. Some of the nursing and nutrition stuff is against our wellness policy, I can tell you that right away. There's, there's stuff that we need to figure out how we're working with our town counterparts. There's obviously curriculum pieces. I mean, this is so huge. And I know it's the first step, and I know you're planning more, but I just really want to express that I don't feel this is like anywhere near done for a very public discussion at the school committee level. So when would we expect like the next thorough discussion?
Well, like I said, we're going to sit with our teams and really delve into the report, identify those areas that we definitely need to move on quicker, right, than others? Identify those areas that we're already starting to work on.
Yeah.
I think a lot of the things that you've seen in here, you've already seen come to you in terms of, hey, here's some recommendations for how we're going to change the model of special ed services, program changes that you saw. There are staffing pieces that are happening, you know, all these things are out there and happening. So you've been getting updated on that. What you'll probably see next year, after we kind of develop a game plan, is what that plan will be with priorities, based on again, what we've done, where we need to go, and what we'll do first, second, third. And then we'll update you on those, on that game plan as we go through the next, the next year. And of course, as we need, if we need resources to support whatever recommendations that are there, we will come to you and request those resources. That could be if we find something that's like of immediate need and we don't have the funds to do that, you might see us sooner on that part of it. But I'm hoping to compartmentalize it into multiple topics, based on priority, bring those to you as the year unfolds next year. And again, whenever you're looking at student services, this is never a one, here's a report, you know, we're going to fix this and we're going to be done. It's an ever-changing scenario. And so you're going to see constant evaluation of it and constant changes as we move forward. So, but I do imagine, with my goal next year being a focus on special education and student services in general, you'll see me working with the student service department. You know, Kate will come out and really help spearhead the initiative to move this forward. And you'll see me report that on my goals as well as we move forward.
Yeah, I know we're talking about school committee goals, next agenda item, but I, I think this needs to be one of our top goal areas as well. And then just two other things, if I may. I spoke with you earlier as well, but the de-cap, and Dr. Ekstrom and I had a conversation that she alluded to, that never came to school committee for approval from our previous administration. So unfortunately, it does not surprise me that staff was not familiar and aware of it, because as a school committee, it was never elevated to us.
But de-cap is state law.
But it's supposed to come to us for approval.
It's state law.
I know it's state law, but we never saw it, we never approved it. So I was speaking with Superintendent Luff earlier, as we look at that, if there's revisions, or even if there are no revisions, it, it does really need to come to us.
Yeah, one of the things you'll see over the course of next year is Dr. Munoz taking some de-cap, as it currently is, and looking at our MTSS interventions and all those pieces, and ensuring that the things that we're doing well are embedded in that, identifying those areas of need to be able to train staff to incorporate more of those pieces. I think it's important to know, and to Mr. Hilton's point too, although it's the plan, you know, you, we want to give you that information of what that looks like and make sure it's public and transparent. Our teachers, I have to give them credit for implementing accommodations as part of their general practice. Now, sure, that could definitely be generalized and more embedded everywhere, but I, I don't want people to think in the community that there are not accommodations happening in the classrooms.
And, and I'm hoping what you said that that was why I asked that question, was like I was questioning, oh, well, the de-cap isn't being, a lot of de-cap is just like best practices for teaching. And I think a lot of people do that.
But in the report, it says it is in pockets, it is not everywhere. And that is something that is absolutely a hundred percent should be a concern of the school committee.
And that's, that's what I'm referring to. It's, it's, I just want teachers to know out there that are doing the accommodations on a regular basis as part of their practice, that thank you for that, it is happening in a lot of different places with a lot of different staff for a lot of different kids. Certainly there are areas of pockets of need everywhere, and not just with the de-cap. I'd say in a lot of other areas too that we're working on. But I do just want to acknowledge that it wasn't a not happening, accommodations weren't happening. I do know and think that the de-cap itself, the document, is not a known entity, right? People don't look and hear de-cap and say, oh yeah, I know exactly what that is, I know it's on page five. It's something that has to be operationalized, right, and really put out there. That, no question, right, that's there. But there are, there are accommodations happening in the schools. I just, we'll continue to try to make that, like anything else, any other good practice, generalized and embedded everywhere.
The last thing I'll say, and this is more to the community. There are things that are embedded in this report that we as a school committee and district have been saying for years and just with the budget and the town have not been able to do. The tiered one is a perfect example. We've been talking about that year after year about why we needed to strengthen tier one. Staffing and tools and instruction. And the previous override pledge really handicapped us in being able to do some of the things we needed to do, because we were permitted to add special education services and ELL services. We were permitted to add the paras that are referenced in the report, that we have too many. But what we were not permitted to do under that override pledge is add more than five general education staff per budget year for five years. So some of what is in this report is a reflection of a stronger collaboration and understanding and trust from the town to the school system. Just want to say that. But any other thoughts or questions at this time from my colleagues?
No, I would just say, you know, I think it's really helpful to have kind of a guiding document to kind of show us what we need. And then to follow up with the team that we hired for specificity. Like when I saw that there were out of districts placements and how much we were spending, like what towns are doing it well? How can we replicate that? Or lack of centralized district-wide system to monitor IEP compliance, that's concerning. What can we do to, those are like easy ones, we can just pluck off. And I'm, I know we'll get it done, I'm very hopeful. And I also am a huge proponent of the co-teaching model. I know we talked about it, but I think it's wonderful when it works. And so she said that there were a few teachers that did it really well. Hopefully she'll communicate to you, Superintendent Luff, about which teachers are doing that and hopefully support teachers in doing it in the future, because I think it's very rewarding. ELL, special ed, so I, I find this report really refreshing and a good starting place.
Thank you, Judith. So our contract with them is over, correct?
I have to look at it, but I believe so.
Yeah, so I have their, their bill, their second bill. We had them one payment, I was kind of waiting until we got through everything, and we got the receivables. So I think we can have a discussion if it's, if that officially ends it, but you know.
Yeah, and this is not the fault of anybody. And I spoke with Superintendent Luff about this as well, but.
Judy's still on too, if you have a question.
But I, I, I do wish we would have, that it would have panned out more like the elementary task force, where that, those consultants met with us five, six times, and there was more back and forth, and okay, you said this, but here's our questions, please follow up. And I feel unfortunately, that isn't happening here.
You can certainly revisit like what their expectations of the contract were and see if there's anything left that we need to do here at the end. But I think for the most part, all the deliverables have happened.
Joan and Anne Marie, did you have any questions? I don't see anything on screen, but I want to make sure I'm not missing you. No, okay. No, okay. All right, so Mr. Luff, would you like to introduce our guests from CPAC?
Kristen Jacob, thank you so much for coming from CPAC. She's here to present to you an updates, or discuss an update with you on, on CPAC's current state of senior affairs and any, I think, any kind of advisors or recommendations that she might have for you in terms of student service and special ed. So welcome, Kristen.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. As most of you know, CPAC is a parent-led group required by Massachusetts law that works in partnership with the school districts and schools supports students with disabilities and their families. We serve as a resource and a sounding board and a bridge. Tonight I'd like to share a brief overview of our year. We started out the year with our first month meeting, and we did some changes to our board. We got rid of the treasury position, because nobody wanted to do it. And we're going to bring on a new position next year to help bring in some more parents and get some more focus out to the different schools and get more knowledge going. We also met with Mr. Luff at the beginning of the year, and I'm happy to say that one of our wishes in our meeting came true with the moving of the elementary PACS program to one individual school. So that was a good, a good boost for us. We were involved in the state-level engagement with the DESI audit and the tier-focused monitoring one that we just finished up on there. And then we had a lot of involvement with parent, and, and, parent education and engagement. We had our basic rights presentation in October. We did a, a meeting in January on the new IEP meeting. We had a meeting in March with, that was a hybrid, our first hybrid meeting of the year, where we did an Ask the Advocate meeting, where we had an advocate come and answer questions, help teach, help teach parents how to advocate for, or caregivers to advocate for their children. And then we finished up the year with an end-of-the-year meeting just last night, where we introduced Kate and answered some questions about the new middle school and any questions parents had about ESY and the upcoming school year. Some of the concerns that some of our parents do have is the lack of a language-based learning class, which does go to the talk of out of district placements and whatnot. And just more concerns on the upcoming school year with the new middle school, which is common amongst all the parents, I'm sure, of coming up. But yeah, that's about our year-end review.
Thank you so much, Kristen. I just want to say thank you for the partnership that CPAC offers the district. I think it's, it's together and collaborating that we do what's best for kids. And, you know, and I hope you know that you can come to us whenever you need to for feedback. You know, Kate will be here. They, we need you too, right? As much as you need us, and we'll work together. And I love the partnership, I should.
Kristen, could I ask you?
Yes.
Is there anything that you can think of, like directly from the school committee, that the CPAC would want or need? Obviously, we're a very small board, there's only five of us, but I do know of. But I do know of other districts where like a school committee member is the liaison to the CPAC, or there is just a different direct line of communication. I don't know if that's something.
I mean, that would definitely be something we'd be interested in, having more communication with school committee. This is only our second year as the board. We took over from Nancy and, Nancy and Jen when they retired. And so this is probably our first time even talking in front of the school committee as the board. So yeah, I mean, that would definitely be something we'd be interested in.
Okay. You're actually the first time that CPAC has spoken to the school committee in the eight and a half years that I've been. So I'm very happy that you're here.
I'm happy to be here, and we would love to open up a communication line that way as well, and do more of these.
Any questions or feedback from my colleagues?
No, I'm happy to be a liaison if we decide that that's necessary, because I, CPAC is critical to supporting parents and making sure their kids get the services they need, so.
I agree. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thanks for waiting until eight-thirty, I appreciate it. David put the air conditioner on here, I was, I would have told you to bring a jacket.
I'm comfortable.
LPAC, our, our folks that we're going to present tonight are not able to be here. So Dr. Munoz is going to present the presentation on LPAC updates.
I don't think we mean presentation, it more explains what LPAC is, and I think that I can just give the verbal update.
Okay, does that work?
It's next to the presentation. So, so LPAC is the other side. We have special education, and then we have our multilingual learners. And Ms. Boujwa heads up LPAC, and it's been a challenge this year having attendance for families to come out in person and do some of the things they want to do, especially in the spring. And so I, I know I attended a meeting with Ms. Boujwa, with, with, when Ms. Boujwa put on an LPAC meeting, and it was very, very low-attended. And we had like twenty-five families come from to show up, and then we only had a couple of families come actually show up. And so what we have done is, Ms. Boujwa is currently trying to rethink how we're going to do this format, especially with the new administration, implementing the new immigration policies. Some families are kind of nervous to turn out in, in person a little bit. And so we definitely are going to move to more virtual model. But we have had our family liaisons contacting families and, and talking to them, getting to know them. We have six family liaisons in the district. And I think, you know, some of the things that they share their concerns with, they're similar of like getting messages from the district. We know they go through Parent Square, we know they go, they get emails, but even then, even, even when it's translated, they still have some challenges accessing material. So that's one of the things that we are going to continue to work on a little bit. We do a great job with our family liaisons, reaching out and getting to know families a little bit. And then Ms. Boujwa has a parent who will head up LPAC next year, who she's been working with this spring. And she has kids all the way from pre-K system, all the way to like a nephew in the high school. So she has kids throughout the school system in Norwood. So she's very, very interested in heading up and trying to get a board established. And so it's just, we just have had low turnout in the spring to try to do anything LPAC-related. We've tried to leverage some family language classes to try to recruit that way, which we actually had some success at the vault, but the longer the year has played out, the less attended we have had events, so. But yeah, that's been the biggest advocacy that we've heard, is like, how can we ensure that families are still getting communication of some things from the district, even though we, they get it through Parent Square? They're, they're still saying, I don't know, some people are like old school, want the paper copy coming home with the kid.
Yeah.
So that's, that's always been, been a battle to deal with. And so we want to make sure that families receive all the information that other families are getting.
Okay, are there any questions for Dr. Munoz?
No, I appreciate you guys adapting the meetings to meet people in this time, so.
Yeah, that's what we're going to try to do. I mean, we, we know that the community, this community is a very personable, want a hug, all those other things, but it just hasn't, or it was like that more in the fall. It's very, drifted off very much so to where like families just, and they haven't said why they're not showing up, but they're saying, we're going to show up, and then they don't show up. So, so we're hoping that our family liaisons that we established more in the middle of the year are building stronger relationships with the families throughout the district, that there will be more safety and peace of mind for them to actually participate in some of our events and advocate on behalf of the multilingual learners, so.
Great. Thank you very much. Superintendent Luff, should we move on to your report?
Sure. Let me just start by recognizing a few students who have been awarded and nominated for the Massachusetts Foreign Language Association Award for Excellence in World Language Study. Very proud of Bridget Connelly, Joe Larky, John Campbell, Julia Zanatelli, and Mariella Abby Elias for receiving the nomination for this award. It's an incredible feat for them. I would also like to say that in every one of these award letters, that Jessica Kaplan was called out for some incredible work specifically, and I will read this, because I, I love to hear this about any one of our teachers. "It is clear that Jessica Kaplan is a dedicated, passionate educator who goes above and beyond to inspire students, to not only excel in their studies, but to engage with the world beyond the classroom. Through her encouragement, high expectations, and unwavering belief in their students' potential, she fosters an environment where learners are empowered to take risks, make mistakes, and ultimately succeed." It's just really a wonderful thing to hear about one of our teachers. And the awards that these, these kids are going to be receiving, you know, due to this is awesome. So I just wanted to congratulate the students. I do have a couple more quick, quick things, just that we had a tremendously awesome staff recognition ceremony just the other day, last Thursday, in collaboration, conjunction with our, our union partners. We planned together and celebrated the retirement of many of our staff members, teachers, paraprofessionals, custodial staff, and more. They received awards. And we also, at the same time, provided professional teaching status certificates for those younger teachers who are just starting their fourth year essentially in Norwood. It was a great ceremony. Those who were not able to attend, we tried to get them the award at different times. So, I just want to thank our, our teachers association for sponsoring that with us and thank our, our teachers and recognize our PTS folks as well as our retirees. And of course, we had graduation on Sunday, which was awesome. Perfect weather, albeit a little bit of wind, but it was a lovely ceremony. And congratulations to all of our graduates.
Thank you very much, Mr. Luff. So, with that, we can move into budget. We did unfortunately have to cancel our budget subcommittee meeting the other day. Both Emery and I had other conflicts, but we are going to meet again on the 12th, I believe, yes, June 12th from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. We'll be taking some preliminary look and discussion around the five-year budget projections that Mr. Luff and Mr. Mannion are working on. And then I am still working on that budget subcommittee handbook. Should hopefully have it for your review at the next meeting. But is there anything around the budget that you wanted to provide, any direction or questions you have that you want to add to our budget subcommittee agenda?
This is a very long-term question.
Yeah.
Theoretically, if we wanted to try to, and I know we got about 300,000 of the, I forget how much that we asked for at town meeting in the spring, could we theoretically ask again at that fall town meeting?
So, for the reserve fund?
Yes.
So, we asked for 880 and we got 300,000, correct?
Yep.
So, you're asking, can we ask for the rest of it at fall town meeting?
Yes.
It could always go back on a warrant.
Yeah, we just have to be mindful of when the timeline happens because they'll probably be planning that like late summer. I don't know when it happens here, August or something.
Usually August, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, but if we miss that part, then we're not on the fall, so, yeah.
Could you discuss that because I think it would be.
Discuss it more as a budget subcommittee?
Yes, I think it would be incredibly worth it to ask again. And I think that, as we had spoken about some of our town partners, you know, obviously, the Finance Commission was in support of that.
They were.
And I think that, that's good. And I think that it also demonstrates that, you know, we know that's an area that's a push point. And I, I think that that's money well-spent and the town has enough for it, so.
Okay.
I don't know if that's an ask or a question or whatever it may be.
Okay, we can definitely discuss it again.
Yeah.
Any other budget items you want to add to our long-term agenda for budget sub? And we are allowed to talk about agendas, so if anything comes up, just shoot me an email as the chair of the budget subcommittee and I'll work with Mr. Luff.
I actually think, if you don't mind, Teresa.
Yeah.
Now, in one of my memos, I talked about kind of when I would present my goals and all those kind of things a while back. We should probably, I would like town meeting data started to come out now for those ideas. I would like to probably get the budget calendar done earlier than.
So, work on that next time?
Yeah, yeah, I think that would be a great thing to start, just to really get us, you know, on track for how we want to move forward with things, make sure.
That's a great plan. Okay.
Do the budget calendar earlier and get that set up.
FY '27 budget calendar.
Correct.
Okay.
FY '27.
Perfect. All right, so I will turn over the next couple of budget items to Superintendent Luff and Mr. Mannion to talk us through.
Great. The first one on here, obviously, the budget subcommittee handbook, we were moving on at different time. Shared cost allocation agreement. Mr. Mannion, I did a memo for this. I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, so we reached out to the, our town partners and we met about the shared allocation cost agreement. We didn't find that we had any recommended changes for this agreement. It was just signed in the fall, when we did it in the fall. So, we don't need to get a new, we don't believe we need a new signed agreement. We're not recommending any changes to it for next, for next fiscal school year. So, and I don't know if your school committee policy, do you need to vote it every year or only if there's changes? Because there's no recommended changes, so this policy is still good from the town's perspective, but if you need to vote it, you can vote it.
So, it's only if there are changes.
Okay.
However, what I, what I will do just for this and the facilities MOU is I will do kind of just another copy with new signature sections, just so we can update and have it kind of fresh every year.
Okay.
And we'll ask the town to help us out with that. I think it's just signing, but just so we know, it's, it was reviewed and we're all good. Same thing with facilities MOU when we get there.
Great.
Great.
Okay.
Compliance. Is that next?
Next up is, this one is all you, Mr. Mannion, and the end-of-year compliance review.
This is, this will be very short, but I just wanted to fill you in on the end-of-year pupil, well, the end-of-year financial report that we do to the DESI. It's a required report. This is where the DESI gets all their financial data. It's a very involved report. If you're in a business office in a school, this is a lot of the work that you do in September because it's a huge report with multiple schedules and you're required to be audited on every year. You can see the attached audit report. It's, it's to the school committee and I just want to say, this was the email from the auditor attached, hi Sean, attached is a draft of the EOIR audit. There are no findings. We did note that the revenues for the preschool fund were reported as other local receipts while the expenditures were presented in the school choice and other day tuitions. Please report the revenues in the tuitions row next year when completing the EOIR, so the fund is treated consistently. But no substant, no findings in the report, which is amazing. It was the first year that Gina Mung, our Assistant Business Manager, she kind of took the lead on the report. And I'm new to Norwood, although I've done the report, so it's a good pat on the back for Gina and, and something to celebrate that you got through an audit with no findings. It's great.
Yeah.
So, can I just ask, schools go through this, right? Does the town side go through something like this?
The town has to do, they have to do things for the DOR, yes.
Is it as involved?
Probably from their perspective. I don't know because ours has some unique aspects with special education and with transportation. Yeah.
Thank you.
Unique.
But this end-of-year report is also why we need the shared cost allocation agreement, correct? Because you referenced it.
Correct. So, this report, this report reports on every dollar of school money spent. So, it includes our operating budget, includes grants, it includes revolving, and it includes even the town's indirect costs. So, their portion of HR, you know, our portion of HR, facilities. And it gives the per pupils for every dollar spent. I mean, it's very comprehensive. And that's where when you go on DESI and you see financial data, it's coming from this report.
And make you guys do the work and DESI takes the credit for it. Sounds about right. Sounds about right.
Exactly.
But thank you for your work on that and the clarifying questions.
That's our, our good news.
Next, there are two budget transfers and I think I shared some information with you today. One of these was originally in our monthly budget transfers. It was, and I'll have Mr. Mannion explain this, but it was, it should have been voted on by you. So, we added this to the agenda in terms of budget transfers for you. And in your packet, there is a transfer as well as memos from both the principal of Bults and the principal of the high school regarding why these budget transfers are being requested, but.
So, it's two separate transfers. The first one is for Bults. If you want to pull that one up, it's, it's kind of small. But they're essentially moving funds that they have available in their accounts from textbooks, software, and library books to their, what we call the equipment replace and repair budget. It's, it's $12,900. You know, so the sum is under $25,000. Technically, by the way, these accounts are made, it's going from the 2000s and the instructional to a 4,000 equipment account. So, and it is a substantial amount, so we decided that it should go in front of the school committee. Principal Ferrera gives her rationale. She, it's this furniture that's, you know, getting ready for the shift eventually to K through four schools, as well as we got the Playful Learning Institute grant and they're looking for some different types of furniture. They did a visit to Sharon and they saw some varied learning spaces that they, they were, they liked. And so, she would like to, like to move this money and make this purchase. The purchasing deadline that I sent to the principals and everyone was last Friday. It's still, we can still allow a few if we, if it's, you know, if we review it and allow it. But purchasing is essentially winding down.
And I, we'd held them off and said, "Don't approve it yet." I want, we had to bring it to school committee, but we gave them a little bit of extra time based on the fact that we wanted to approve it.
Yeah. Do you want to invoke, go through the other one for the high school or vote on them individually?
I just want to comment briefly that, you know, it is noted in the memo, but the past couple of budget cycles, we had to minimize the money for furniture in, in the budget. So, these are things that the Bults has needed for a while. It looks like Principal Ferrera notes the 1920s school year is the last time we invested in furniture at the Bults. So, I appreciate their willingness to be flexible and patient and I'm glad we're able to figure out this transfer.
I mean, I will say even for the FY '26 budget, when we put their original budgets from the principals together, a lot of them had added furniture. And when we had to reduce our budget after BBC, that's often the first thing we reduce. So, they're all, you know, furniture requests are always there, but they're always usually the first thing that comes out as well.
Yeah.
We also kind of wanted to wait to see what happens with the middle school. Now, we know most, you know, a lot of the furniture there wasn't usable. And we also wanted to have maybe a bigger discussion with the '27 budget and the elementary plan about elementary furniture.
Okay, so why don't you take us through the other one and then we can vote on it together.
So, it's a similar situation. So, the next one for the high school. Again, they have some budget left at the end of the year. It's a little bit more. It's 15,000. Oh, it's.
667.
Why is it off? Well, yeah, the sum might be slightly off on one side there, but it's within a dollar, I think. So, yeah, it's a dollar different. I'm not sure why. Oh, the top line on the left is 978-512 and the top line on the right is 978-412.
The transfer is 785.
Yeah. Either way, the dollar. Yeah, you can decide that. So, he's given some background here. They've, the high school was built at a time when there were these massive computer lab, you know, labs. They don't use those anymore because we're using laptops. And the equipment, the furniture is these huge built-in tables. And at the high school, Dr. Galligan's been replacing those as he can, a few a year. So, they're moving the money to replace these and also to follow up on our cooperative learning models where students are sitting for, for, you know, in groups of four.
Tables versus desks, yeah.
They want to get rid of these massive old computer labs, which aren't usable anymore, really relevant, and replace it. And they just turn over a few of those classrooms every year. The high school's about 12 years old and a lot of the furniture, he mentions, even when they built the hospital, hos, the high school, they did not buy furniture. They used the prior furniture. So, a lot of it's very aged too.
So, we are asking to transfer $15,677.53 for the high school. Is that the right amount?
Yeah, let's use the higher amount there.
Okay, thank you. Emery, do you have a question?
Just a general comment for those who might be paying attention at home to the fact that we just asked for a capital-outlay refresh for one of the computer labs at the high school. I just want to make sure the public understands that these computer labs are not the same as the one that we asked for money for the refresh. That the refresh was for the, if I'm mistaken, the engineering computer labs, the ones that are, you know, where there's specialized trade, you know, classes going on, not the generalized computer labs that we're talking about in this transfer, just to be clear.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Okay, so any further questions or is there a motion to approve the two budget transfers in our packet for the Bults and the high school?
We can do both at the same time.
I think so.
So moved.
Okay, so David, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Judith. So, I'll poll individually. Emery?
Yes.
Thank you. Joan, are you there?
Yes, and yes.
Okay, thank you. Judith?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
All right, I'm a yes as well, so those budget transfers are approved by 50. So, next item, Emery, do you want to talk a little bit about the scheduling of our summer meetings, where we are in that process?
Yeah, so you guys should have seen Maggie Hill for me today. Apologies for putting it out so late. But I put this on the agenda really for just to touch base. We can talk about scheduling outside of the meeting. So, I think there are responses from all the two that I sent it to. I will not call out any specific superintendent. I think there are just two people that are reading through responses.
I was waiting to see what you all said and then I was telling which ones I was actually going to be okay with.
I'll call out myself and say I did it right before the meeting.
I wasn't preparing for anything today or anything.
So, I did just take a look at it. Of course, we know that there's going to be very few at any dates that we can all make this summer. There's actually two apparently where six out of six respondents can make it in July, which is kind of shocking. That doesn't happen. I know Michelle's going to blow that up and Dave is going to blow that up when they go in there. So, but there, there's probably going to be a date scheduled where we're not all going to be able to make it unfortunately. Or if maybe you didn't put a date, you put a date on there and you didn't check it because you prefer not to, but maybe you could make it. That happens too. I tried to do that this year as opposed to previous years where I was just like, "Yeah, even if I'm, you know, on vacation, I'll dial in." And I was like, "No, let's try to actually make this realistic." So, I think if we just get the last couple of responses, we should be able to get something scheduled there. I think that the idea was to have at least two, one in July and one in August, less with discussions with Tim. It feels like that we need more in August leading into the school year to make decisions and to have votes from the school committee going into, going into that. But generally, we've tried to do at least the one in July and one in August to make sure that we're sticking to our business, we're making sure that we're continuing with our business meetings and getting things approved for the administration. But yeah, that's the update. It's, it's, yeah, always going to, it's always tight.
All right, thank you, Emery. Any questions or everybody will just make sure they fill it out?
I will, I will fill it out. I promise. Tim and I are going to, it's by, probably tomorrow or Friday and then we'll let you guys know.
And I will at the next meeting when we talk about, because I'll talk with long-term agenda here in a second. But when we talk about the dates for the year, I'll put my recommendations in there too. I'll have a recommendation set for you guys.
Go to the next meeting.
Can I have one ask to the whole school committee? And I know it, it worked out that we canceled the one last week, but this is the worst time of year. So, if we can try to avoid back-to-backs, just, because I'll be in the same situation again next year where it's like graduation prom and all of this, so.
I think we did pretty decently. This was the only back-to-back this year.
I know, and I like.
And we didn't have.
I didn't, I didn't recognize it though until the week. I'm like, "Oh, no."
Yeah. I actually don't think I even realized it myself until I was like, "Oh, oh, that is back. I'm going to have to get those. We're going to have to turn that one out quickly."
There was a reason that we did it and I think it was likely because I did not want to have a meeting the last week of June.
Yes.
Yeah.
When everyone was kind of out and about. So, we decided to do it that way, I think.
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I knew there'd be a reason. So, since we're, we'll, we'll just jump ahead really quick because while we're talking about it, it just makes a lot of sense to say that for the long-term agenda, like obviously, we're coming up to the end of the school year. I did ask Lisa to create a new one for the '26, '27, sorry, '25, '26 school year starting July. So, there's currently a version in a new folder in the drive, but it's just full of all of this year's stuff. So, it's got to be kicked through and kind of deleted and all of things moved to the quote parking lot so that we think can be, you know, individually moved into the spots they need to go to. So, just in case anyone sees that and thinks, "What is this? This is crazy," it's literally the '24, '25, just pasted in there for now. But it has been created to start things off.
Okay, thank you.
And yeah, and this is, and this is just the, yeah, this is the last thing. We have one more meeting in the current '24, '25 long-term and Mr. Luff has the items here that we would be doing on our final.
I think I have to add my goals to this.
Yes.
I decided that, as well as you will be receiving the school improvement plans. Not necessarily a discussion, you have questions about them, but you'll be receiving them on this date, so you'll have it for that.
I think this should wrap up everything. And of course, that's our school committee reorg meeting, so.
Yes. So, is there anything that anybody would like to request added to June 18th? I feel like it's pretty thorough from my perspective.
Looked good.
Tim, was there anything that you needed to meet with Joan and I as a policy subcommittee before the next meeting? Are we okay?
I think there's one thing you'll see tonight that would, that would have been fine, but I think we're going to address that. You know, once we do the reorg and figure out who's where, we'll, you know, I'll work with you actually too and we'll get a good, solid idea of what we want to look at for policies.
Yeah.
And really do a review and try to get a schedule with you guys to do that.
Okay. Okay, great.
We, Superintendent and I, we were talking about this school nutrition, food service benefits. We were going to look at it in budget sub, but if the budget subcommittee wants to take it to the school committee, we might have like a policy about that to vote on at the next school committee.
Okay.
Or we could, or we could hark that until later and wait and do it in the fall.
We could park it till August.
Well, you might like, we're probably going to want to do something with this fiscal year as the recommendation.
Was that on the agenda for the meeting? We had it canceled yesterday.
Yeah.
So let's, let's move it to the 12th.
Yeah.
Budget 12, 18?
Well, no, we, we meet on the 12th.
I'm just saying if the budget subcommittee wants to make a vote on it, would we need, when would you need it on this agenda? Tuesday?
Yeah.
I mean, if it's not urgent, we could move it to July or, I don't know, I feel like it's something that needs to be done on the 18th or that's, I guess it's kind of like...
The question is when do you need it, Sean?
Well, we will need to do something ideally with FY '25, now that we're closing, which I would need to know probably by July.
Okay, so then maybe just put it on the 18th, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So discussion and vote, food services benefits.
Okay.
Right.
Great.
Food service benefits of all that's at the end. You said another one, didn't I? What did I say?
Uh, your goals.
Yes, I got that.
You got that, um...
Oh, this, the, you'll, you'll get this school improvement.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Okay, great. Emery, even though we just talked about long-term agenda tonight, since Lisa is updating the one for the next cycle, should we touch base on that next week? That way we don't wait until the summer or...
Yeah, anyway, put that back on, Emery, just to kind of quickly look at, at least the next couple of meetings, to at least get those.
Yeah.
What, I think that's going to do.
Okay. Great. Any other agenda items at this time? Okay, so then let's go back on, Superintendent, if you can talk to us about the facilities MOU update, please?
Sure can. So we met with our town partners as part of our memorandum of understanding and the Board of Selectmen, Emery and Tony and I forget, member of the, of the, of the select board. And we met and we decided the, or had a conversation at the facility management department MOU was appropriate at this time. We didn't suggest any revisions, and so we agree it was, it should continue to be in effect the way it is. And as discussed earlier tonight with the shared cost, I will ask our friends to re-sign, just so we have something fresh. Just acknowledging that, you know, we met and here's, you know, what we agreed to then, but there will be no changes at the time. So no reason for a vote, but just wanted to give you an update.
Thank you very much. So there's nothing under policy, correct?
Nothing under policy.
Okay, so then we're going to go into new business. The superintendent's contract, we do need to go back into executive session to discuss, so we will talk about that in open session next meeting. But do you want to take us through the rest of the consent agenda?
Yes, so just before folks make a motion, do a recommendation on the consent agenda, I would appreciate when they do the motion, somebody anyway, to do a motion with thanks to Bay State Textiles and Vicky and Chuck Zemitev for their kind donations.
So moved.
And then just, oh, is there a second? So, thank you, Judith. Okay, so then just to be clear, the consent agenda is the successive principal contracts, the administrative assistant MOA, the PLC leader job description, facilities rental policy, KF, the monthly budget transfers, and then those two donations. Okay, so I do have to poll individually, since we're hybrids, so Emery?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Judith?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, so 5-0, those items in the consent agenda are approved.
It's a really efficient meeting tool. I really like that.
Well, I think it's important to note that the discussions around these were had in executive session, so you had those talks and, you know.
Yes, important.
And today was not an exceptionally long meeting, but just in those times where we do, it's like, it's nice to use that. Why I'm smiling about consent agenda.
Doesn't mean everything goes under the consent agenda, though, David. All right, so at this time, we have school committee addenda. Emery, do you have anything this evening?
Just to say I apologize for being late, travel for this, for work, and just I attended quite a few things this week, celebratory things for the school to the students. Graduation was fantastic. Congratulations to all the graduates. It was a beautiful day. I'm sorry for all of you kept losing your hats. Your boards, your boards kept flying everywhere and it felt really bad because there were so many wonderful designs on them and lots of wonderful hairdos that were getting really messed up by the wind. But it really didn't seem to dampen anyone's spirits. It was, it was a really nice ceremony. I also attended the ceremony for the professional status for the teachers and the retirees. It was, it was, it was, it was great to celebrate both of those sets of staff. You know, the outgoing staff as well as, you know, staff that are becoming, reaching that professional status and celebrating that milestone. It was different than we've done it in past years and a good difference, and I hope that we can continue that tradition and it becomes something that's, you know, really well-attended and, you know, these, these staff members and teachers look forward to. So congratulations again to the staff members that got their professional status and congratulations to all the retirees and, you know, good luck in your future and have a margarita, you know, and, or two.
Thank you, Emery. Joan, do you have anything this evening?
I have no addenda this evening, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Judith?
No.
David?
Congratulations to retirees, congratulations to the class of 2025, and to the rest of everybody working in schools. We're almost there. Almost done. Almost done.
So I echo the congratulations of my colleagues. Class of 2025 is a little extra special to me since my daughter graduated, and I really watched those kids grow up. So hearing what all of them are going to be doing next, knowing many, many of those faces since kindergarten and the Willet song of, I'm trying to cry, "I'm growing up way, way up. I'm growing up in the way of the world." They sing that at the Willet when they graduate. And I remember so many of those kids at graduation from the Willet, and I don't know where time has gone. Time is weird. I'm mad at time right now. But like the, the zoo field trip that they took at the Willet and then so many of those kids watching them, the athletic teams and the fine arts and the activities and the resilience of that group because COVID happened, their seventh grade year, when everything shut down. And then their eighth grade year was very weird because it was like hybrid and they actually did not have the ability to rotate classes that year. They stayed in one class with the same cohort and the teachers rotated. And they transitioned to high school without a normal middle school experience. But to see them and, and you know, when Mr. Kerr and Mr. Longley are here and they tell us all the students who have been recognized, they rebounded. They were so resilient. They are so amazing. And it's a really impressive class. They are going to some really great schools. There's kids going into the trades. There's kids going into the service. And I'm just so proud of all of them. And I'm always proud of all of them, but I'm extra proud of the class of 2025. And I just wish them luck. And Mr. Luff, I thought you had a great speech. I think Dr. Galligan had a great speech. What did he say? Be nice. Be, be kind, be strong, be healthy. And there was one more. Sorry, Hugh. I listened, I promised. And then the valedictorian had a great speech as well. There's more transitions coming up. We've got eighth grade graduation next week and of course the kindergarten graduations. And I'm not sure where the elementary schools are in the grades four and five move-up days, but I know those either have just happened or are about to happen. So to all the other parents whose heartstrings might be tugged throughout the transitions, you can do it. And then just a huge thank you to our staff as a school committee member and as a parent. You know, we heard about it from Dr. Ekstrom, but we really are a district, the staff who deeply, truly cares. And to me, that matters more than anything else. So thank you for caring about our kids. But on that note, we do have to go back into executive session for the purpose of discussing our superintendent's contract for year two. We will only return to open session for the purpose of adjournment. So I do need a motion to go back into executive session and then I will need to poll individually. Thank you, Judith. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, David. So Emery?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Thank you. Judith?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, so we will go into executive session and we will be back two weeks from now, so everybody have a good night.